Good morning. We'll call a meeting to order for Tuesday, November 19th, 2013. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Period. Citizens to be heard. I don't think there are any to be heard on anything not on the agenda, so we'll move on to paving bills.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The bills are paid. Approval approved, rather, of minutes on November 5th and November 12th, 2013.
No approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. First item, the next item on the agenda is the Adult Mental Health Social Service Director Rhonda Porter and we, pardon, Pat Boyer and Tina Jacobson and Beth Zimmerman. Good morning.
(inaudible)
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 Why don't you sit down and we will do a couple of other things before that if that's all right. John, are you ready for committees?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Okay, last week we had public health meeting at the Eagle Cafe following this meeting and discussed the plan for merging our four county public health departments, which we'll be talking about later today, so I think that's going to be covered. Wednesday I had an interesting more than a half. I visited with Mayor-elect in Morehead, Delray Williams, and talked about things that maybe we can work together with county and city, hoping to build some positive relationships there. Had a meeting, Campaign Fundraising Committee Training Session again with the Historical Society later that day. Thursday I participated in a panel discussion down at Tamarion for an Extension Leadership Program, and it was Bob Zimmerman and Sharon Joseph-Josephson and myself that were on this panel talking about, they used the diversion as a, as a case to talk about leadership and how we, we deal with, with issues of leadership. So that was, that was rather interesting. I think it went over pretty well. There was a lab management meeting for the diversion that afternoon, and we proceeded to, to recommend the, the plan, general, in a general sense, the plan for, for crop insurance and so on for, for the program, and all the details have to be filled in, but it simply, you know, hopefully we'll give the farmers some assurance that there will be coverage for their, for their losses for, and yesterday was township meeting day in Glendon. I think that went, went well. There weren't many questions, so, or in a certain words, any hostility, so it was, I think, a positive, a positive meeting and all of, everybody, county employees did a good job, and Wayne did a good job of speaking for us, and Frank spoke for us, so it was good.
Well, maybe hostile. Frank was a little bit hostile.
Well, you know, yeah, he was defensive, wasn't he?
He was a little.
Yeah.
She got even with Brian though.
You know, when you're new. Talking about each other, yeah. It was part of his initiation.
That's right.
Frank, you're next. John, were you done?
Yep. I'm pretty much attending some of the same meetings that John did, that Partnership for Health in Burnsville. I found out what you guys meant by railroad jobs, so.
(laughing) Tuesday night.
Well, you live in a railroad community.
Yeah.
You're president, right?
Yeah.
Or chair.
Tuesday night I went to the Dillwood City Council Meeting, Monday township meeting there too, same thing that John covered. Last night I went to the Agony Recreation Trail Meeting up at Yulin. Quite a bit of discussion there on the future of the board, you know, what they're planning on doing, you know, as far as funds. They're having a tough time getting hold of funds, and they're really looking at, you know, whether it should be turned over to the DNR or what, you know, as far as what they're going to do with that trail. Went and approved, went over the bylaws or the new thing which will be coming to this, this board for approval. And also they're going to be sending out a letter to all the landowners that float next to adjoining the travel, the trail, because there's a lot of approachment going on, and people getting their crops a little bit too close to that, so going to be sending out a letter on that, so. Those are my meetings.
Okay, well, now I'll go back to item number four, Adult Mental Health. Ms. Porter.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Thanks to Mark. We, we decided we were going to try to bring some of our items a little bit more to you in a PowerPoint format, so for purposes of trying to educate folks that are watching the, the board as well, so we're glad that this is working. I did send the PowerPoint out in your, your packet just in case, so. We're here today to talk with you about some of our adult mental health services, specifically services that are covered under a, our Community Support Plan and our BCO Adult Mental Health Initiative. We do have a plan that's due to DHS, and one of the requirements is really board review and board knowledge of how we intend and would like to spend some of the dollars that are covered under this plan. So the, the first piece is that as a county board, we need to utilize our share of the mental health funds allocated by the Commissioner according to a mental health plan that's approved by the Commissioner. So this is our, our plan. It's, let's see, maybe about twenty, twenty pages in entirety with attachments, but what we're going to cover today in this PowerPoint is some of the bigger pieces of this plan, and this is the plan that would be submitted to DHS for approval for 2014 funds. The funds covered under this plan are in our, are in our budget and allocated out as we'll talk about today. So I'm just going to pass this around. This I did not copy for the board.
Rhonda, could I ask you to just move your mic up a little bit probably?
Sure.
As long as we're going to do this for our audience.
Some of the things that we must assure is that we coordinate a system that makes adult mental health services affordable and available to our citizens that can't afford them. We need to involve our Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council by considering any unmet needs that they report to the county board annually. I think generally in May, our local advisory councils come to the board and talk about any unmet needs that they identified. We need to provide mental health case management as a part of our plan. We need to administer the grants and purchase of service contracts that we determine are necessary as a part of our plan, and we need to assure that those that we employ or contract with provide employees that are experienced and trained in working with adults with mental health. And some of those things under our contracts, we cover in our contracting relationship. So Pat Boyer's going to talk a little bit in detail about those specific grants, and then we have some of our experts here, Beth Zimmerman and Tina Jacobson from Lakeland, who are going to talk about some of the things that Lakeland provides under those grants.
Okay, go to the next slide.
I will control the computer.
Okay. Okay, so on this slide, we're actually involved in two different plans that have to be submitted to DHS and approved by DHS. We are involved in developing a plan for BCO, which is Becker, Clay, Ottertail, Wilkin Adult Mental Health Services, and as you can see, that's the amount of money that we are allocated from DHS. Today we are going to just talk about the Mobile Crisis Program that comes under that allocation, and Beth is going to talk about that. And then we have the Clay County Community Support Program Plan. Of that money, $193,000 is allocated to Lakeland for Community Support Program, and then $67,000 is for contracted mental health case management. It's, it's really to help pay our M.A. share for everybody that is receiving case management through medical assistance. Medical assistance then builds the county a share on those services. So that's how we use that. And then down below is our PATH program. People might wonder, well, why isn't the PATH program really on the BCO side? And what happened is our PATH program is now for all four counties, and it's to work with people who are homeless and who also have serious mental illness. It started originally in Clay County many, many years ago, and then a few, a few years ago, we just added the other three counties to the program, and so that's how it ended up on the Clay County grant instead of in the BCO one. So go to the next slide then. Okay, so BCO, and I know I've been here before and have talked about BCO. It's been around for many, many years now, and Ottertail County is our fiscal host. It, it provides a lot of services that Clay County consumers really benefit from. Beth and Tina are involved in many of them, but I listed them all there. Housing assistance, aftercare services, the different crisis services that we have. Flex funds in Clay County alone, I think we were able to allocate about $30,000 just for Clay County consumers, and what that, most of that went to is basic housing deposits, first month's rent, utility payments for people just to keep them in their home or to get them housed this past year. And the, the BCO is governed by a couple of different committees, and it's on the next slide there. There's an executive committee that has a representative from each county on it, plus a DHS representative, and then there's a BCO Steering Committee, and that is made up of providers, consumers, counties, advocates, many different agencies, and we meet every other month in Ottertail County, and it's that group that makes recommendations to the executive committee on what we think the money should be spent on. And then there's those various committees underneath that make recommendations to the steering committee and the executive committee.
Is that, is that how the dollars are broken up by county too then?
No, no. The, the dollars are broken up on, under kind of a, a needs assessment. There's nothing formal about it.
What is it, this group that?
It's this group, yep. And the executive committee kind of makes the final decisions on the money, but if we see a need in Becker County, and if there's a way to make that happen with our money, we'll allow it. It's not, it's not divvied up by population or by four, whatever. It's based on where's the need that people have.
And also in your packet, the last page, I did provide, Pat had put together kind of a list of the specific services that BCO has funded, and gave some detail regarding those services. It's kind of a nice list, list to get a good idea of some of the specific areas that have been funded.
Okay, so the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Tina, and she is going to tell us what our CSP funds are used on, because we allocate that much money to Lakeland Mental Health Center out of our mental health grant.
All right. Hi. The CSP is an acronym that stands for Community Support Programming. This is an outreach program that's designed to help support individuals to develop self-sufficiency and to reduce the use and need of more intensive, costly, or restrictive placements, both in number of admissions to hospital settings or, and length of stay. CSP is not a time-limited services and doesn't require formal goals to be set up before services can begin. In reporting our CSP time, we've broken it down into two different brass codes. The first portion, which we assign 20% of our grant, focuses on locating adults in our community who have or may have serious and persistent mental illness, informing them about available community support services, and assuring that they have access to those services. This includes rapport building and engaging individuals and services who may not be quite ready to begin the formal goals of other mental health programs. The second portion, which is 80% of our grant, includes ongoing psychosocial rehabilitation and educational services. These include things like home visits, problem solving, connecting people to resources, supporting people while establishing housing, attaining benefits and/or employment, fostering social supports, and providing education about mental illness, treatment, and recovery. These services are supportive in nature and not necessarily treatment-oriented. They are specifically geared to help people to function within the community and to remain in the community. All right, I think that covers our CSP. Our, our PATH funds came into existence, our PATH came into existence in the June of 1988 under the name of Options. The primary mission is to provide outreach, support, and advocacy services to homeless individuals and families, or those who are at risk of being homeless, who are experiencing mental health problems. Again, our breakdown is about a 20%, 80% split. 20% of our time is allocated to locating participants and establishing trusting relationships with them, whether that be in the community, under bridges, in, in homeless shelters. In this process, we want to ensure the awareness of the services that are available to help them and to engage them in the recovery process. 80% of this grant is geared to support people to function in the community and remain in the community. The majority of this grant is focused on establishing immediate and long-term housing options for individuals and families. Our PATH staff members also help to address issues that may be getting in the way of maintaining their housing. The services are supportive in nature and also include collaborating efforts with our SOAR Program, which is another acronym that stands for Social Security Outreach Advocacy and Recovery. And this provides one-on-one assistance for our homeless individuals diagnosed with mental illness to gain access to federal SSI or SSDI benefits.
So, and then just to add on to that, the, the CSP program is actually kind of combined with the Lakeland's Case Management Program, and through a year's time, I think we serve maybe like about 300 people a year.
At least.
Through that, yeah. And under PATH, it was...
For total PATH?
Yeah, yeah. PATH, I mean, the people that work, it was over 100, but it was probably about 80 people that you actually worked one-on-one for a longer period of time with. But these are people that are either homeless or at risk of homelessness and having a serious mental health issue. So those are the ones that are usually typically in a shelter or living with a friend, kind of couch hopping.
Right. Okay. We're going to go on to the Crisis Mobile Team. This particular program is a part of this grant funding as well. Some of the funds come from the adult mental health area, and some of the funds come from the children's mental health area, because we have a combined adult and children's crisis response team. So Beth's going to talk a little bit about that program.
Okay, as you can see, we are accessed through our 800 number, and there is phone support 24/7. There's a couple of different pieces that fall into those hours, but I will hold off on those details until we go through some of the slides. Our Mobile Crisis Team is available from Monday through Friday from 4:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m., and then weekends and holidays from 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. During those times, that's when we can send out a team of two mental health practitioners out to where the adult or child is experiencing a crisis, and we go into the home, help de-escalate, and then do an assessment and form a treatment plan, and then with that, we hope to connect people to services if they don't have any. But we can also keep, we can also keep current service providers up to date for that continuity of care. And DHS, of course, prefers us to be 24/7, and we'd love to be 24/7, but at this time, we are continuing to ask for a waiver to, to give us permission to not run 24/7 due to the high financial costs of running a program.
The, the phone is 24/7, but it's the...
Correct.
The, the, what, reach or whatever that's...
Yes, the, the mobile, the mobile, we call it the mobile dispatch time. Those are specified times where we can go out, but if anyone calls outside those hours, they will still get a live person on the phone.
How, how often are they called out? I mean, is it, are the teams, if they're on...
We average, I, I'm going to use the term dispatch. That is when our mental health professional who supervises our staff on the phone, they will dispatch two mental health practitioners, like a social work level position. They will go out to the home. So, and we estimate about seven to eight dispatches a month.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that includes children and adults.
Yeah.
I went through the 2012 stats, and we had a total of 871 phone calls, and then I broke them down, excuse me, by counties. As you can see, Clay County holds the majority of those phone calls, and again, this includes both children and adults. And the times that is our highest frequency of calls is that 4:00 p.m. till about 12:00 a.m. time slot. The other times where you see the 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., that, those hours are actually on the weekends and on the holidays.
So are we staff from 4:00 to 12:00, where you get most of the calls? Is that when we're staff?
Yes.
Send two people out?
Yep. Yep. Okay, so these are stats from 2010 to 2012. Basically, this is just showing each year that we have been running as a merged program, we, our calls are just, they increase throughout the, throughout the years, and as you can see, the adults do get a significantly larger amount of phone calls that come in versus the children.
Are, are some of these calls, repeat calls from the same?
There are some. It, it's a, it would be a very low number, I would say, anywhere from 2% to 5%.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things that Beth has been doing is spending time with our law enforcements to educate them about the dispatch team, so that if they're called out to homes where there's issues, then law enforcement certainly can encourage families or call the dispatch team as well, as well as some of our other community providers where we, you know, the overall goal is to prevent out-of-home placement of kids, prevent kids being removed and brought up to shelter care or into the hospital for both adults and children. So I think some of these numbers reflect that effort in educating the community and the schools about the dispatch team and the availability.
I was wondering about the other way around, if, how, how often our social, our team that goes out needs law enforcement for protection?
You know, asking for assistance, very minimal. It's probably in the 2% to 5% tile. And we will get calls with police requesting our presence, which is great, because they've stabilized the situation. All the safety concerns are not there anymore, and then we can kind of get in and, and follow through with getting the family connected and more stabilized.
So the calls definitely go to them if it's, if it's a violent situation?
Right. Yep, yeah. Our staff have extensive training, and they're, this is actually like a part-time job for our staff. They, so they're living and working in the area that they also provide crisis services during the evening, so they're very well knowledgeable, and they, they can build rapport easily with individuals that they meet with, which I think attributes to a lower need of assistance from police, but we certainly go through safety training with them in regards to when and absolutely when they need to call. 2010 through 2013, this shows our dispatches. Those as well have increased. I looked at the stats this morning, and as far as for 2013, we actually have now 36 adult dispatches and 26 children dispatches. So then of those dispatches, I like to look at the numbers to see, all right, well, how many hospitalizations did we really divert? And some of this information unfortunately didn't make it on the screen, but I've got the info right in front of me. Roughly 94% of children stay in the home, and then roughly 87% of adults have remained in the home. And so as of October 28th, we have saved 245 hospitalizations, and when you attach dollar signs to that, a huge cost savings.
And who's responsible for, in this case, for the hospitalization costs if they do go? Is it...
They, whether it's Prairie or Sanford, they will go through insurances of the child or adult.
Or Medicaid?
Yes, yes.
And if there is no insurance, and if they happen to sign a mental health hold order on an adult, then that cost would come to the county.
And then for kids, of course, as well, oftentimes that hospitalization might lead to a recommendation of an out-of-home placement, which becomes most often county costs.
I mean, sometimes I was just wondering, you know, you say you saved hospitalization, but there must have been a reason why the call came in, and you say, well, they stayed in the home. Sometimes I wonder, is that a good thing, or?
Yes. The percentage of kids and adults who still do need to be hospitalized are those more critical cases, and, you know, that's, that's a good thing. We're not going to keep a child in a home if it's unsafe for them, and if, if the relationship with the, the child and the, and the parents is just hostile, you know, we're not going to just leave them and say, oh, you need to stay in the home. So it's, it's, it's a good number, and the...
When the team gets there, we develop, we not only try to de-escalate the situation, find out what actually is causing the crisis, we also develop a plan as to how to handle that, how to de-escalate, how to practice if that kind of situation happens again, and come up with a written plan for them, so that they use that when, when things escalate again.
Thank you. And as far as reasons why adults call, this, this is for phone support or reasons that we dispatch out into the homes or into the community. 30% of our calls involve some type of suicidal thoughts, ideation. The other 30% relate to anxieties, and as you can see, 20% refers to paranoia. They may be experiencing hallucinations, delusions, and ironically, we were told by DHS that our percentage of clients who are calling with paranoia is higher than the state average. If you, if you think that they are, are people that have trust issues with, with others, they're not necessarily as likely to reach out. So for whatever reason, you know, our number is higher than the state average.
Could, could that, so, so that's based on the last couple of years, these percentages?
Yes.
Could that, could that be partially seasonal issues, for example, the paranoia of flooding and those types of things? Could that?
It certainly can. You know, springtime, we see our biggest increase. These individuals are severely paranoid, beyond any bit of their control.
I can believe it.
Yeah. And then the remaining calls relate to depression and to some mania.
So if, if I can, and I, I like the way you've broken down reasons why adults call. If this is going on for a first time in the home, how do they know to call you?
It is due to outreach, due to educating the community. We do a ton of advertising. We have billboards. We have advertisements in restaurants, in the bathrooms. We have, I should have brought my list.
And I, I guess, I, I look at it from the standpoint of fortunately not being in one of these predicaments myself, so as I go around, I typically will not pay attention to a lot of, and I think I'm, I speak from the most people who, who walk around here, who, you know, you think, well, okay, well, we're not, we don't have any of these issues, therefore, I'm not out looking for it.
Right.
You know, so, so, but then we never know what, what the next day brings. Anybody does, really, and so all of a sudden, now you're, you could be put into one of these situations, and I haven't been paying attention to your public outreach. I would think that the first calls that go out must go to 911.
Yes.
So does, do they then, through that process, do they, based on what they're hearing, do they notify you as well?
They can, yes. And we're at a point with our programming that we need to, we're going to go back and do some refreshing for them, you know, to even for a dispatch person to remind an officer, it appears there could be some mental health related issues going on with this call. Certainly remember that you can contact the mobile team after things have been stabilized. So it, it's, it's a lot of presence. It's a lot of relationship building with different providers. We constantly reevaluate, you know, where can we reach the general public.
Sure. Well, that's why I asked the question earlier on, how many are reac... Because those... Because though, once somebody goes through this and they've had help, they, they may need it again, but then, so then they know where to call, but it's these, these first time people that.
Right.
We wonder, are we, are we able to, I mean, they don't pull out their smartphone and look up, okay, I got this crisis going on, who should I call?
Right. Yeah, so it's just, it's, it's ongoing.
Okay.
One of our billboards that, that we have, and you'll probably see it if, now that I mention it, because they're all over the place. But on, on our, one of our billboards, we make it very general and just say, a crisis is not knowing what to do next. I mean, it, it's just, it's very, very blanket like that. It's like when you just really don't, you run out of options, you don't know what to do. And then, you know, it talks about the fact that it's a, it's a free call to anybody who calls us and then whether we, you know, our, our mental health professional will take that call and, and try to help them over the phone. And if that just doesn't work, then we'll send a team out and we'll work around it and try to do the best we can to help them out in that situation. Regardless of what the outcome is, we'll make sure that they stay safe.
And maybe, Beth, you could just give a couple examples of, a couple dispatches?
Oh, sure.
An adult one and a child one?
Yeah. Okay, a child one, uh, one example that I use often happened within our first year. We had a child who was diagnosed with Asperger's, meaning that he's got some attention deficit challenges. He's also got social skill challenges, which also with that makes it harder for him to trust other people. And living in a chaotic environment, noises, sounds, sensory wise, these children can be affected. A mom had just moved here to Clay County. She was signing up for public assistance, which is another place where they pump out our crisis information. She was given our information, she called during the daytime and I was able to talk to her, explain some things. I took her information, I entered it into our electronic medical record. And by the end of the phone call with that mom, she was like, okay, this makes more sense. She called when she wasn't in crisis, so she felt more confident that, okay, if something happens, she can call. Matter of a few days, she called and her son was out of control, she could not calm him down, and she was concerned for his safety and for hers. She called our team, we were able to go out, we worked with the child, we calmed him down, and then we worked on a plan to get through the night. I think he had a, a therapy appointment the, the following day. So the timing of us being there was great so we could update that therapist. We do a phone survey a couple days after we've been out to a home. And when the mom was asked, you know, how was your experience? She said, you're not going to believe this, but when I talked to my son after you left, he said, mommy, can we call them again? Because I don't want to go back to the hospital again, and I was happy I didn't have to that time. So coming from a child with so many challenges and, and trust issues, that spoke huge, huge to us. So most of the time, the children, they're gonna be out of control, they're gonna be defiant. That's what a lot of our calls from kids. An example of a dispatch for an adult. We, we've had an individual that has had high paranoia. Before our service was available to him, he often found himself going to the hospital. He was a larger man, pretty intimidating, and in his world of paranoia, always thinking that people are against him. People took his body language and actions as intimidating and would end up in the hospital. Once we merged and were able to advertise and get the word out, he ended up using our program to help de-escalate, to help do one-on-one processing, which he needs. And we were able to divert numerous hospitalizations for him. And he had many service providers, and each time we went out to see him, we were able to collaborate and touch base with his providers to continue to look at his treatment plans, his medications. So that's an example.
You might want to talk about adolescents too?
Oh, yeah. Another way that we are trying to reach out to adolescents, we want them calling us as well. We have silicone bracelets that have our phone number, but it doesn't have the name of our program, it's, it's discreet. And we ordered numerous colors, hoping that we could give colors to schools that matched their, their school mascot, their school colors, so it would just kind of blend in. And we have had an increase of adolescent calls due to that. And we even, we actually had a grandmother who was taking care of her granddaughter. She came home with the bracelet and they had an issue that night, and she said, well, thanks for my kid coming home with this bracelet, I knew to call you guys. So it's just, it's nice to see. How are we doing for time? Are we running over? Quick run over of age groups. As you can see, the majority of our calls and our dispatches come from individuals that are 51 years or older. And the age brackets that follow that would be the 36 to 40-year-olds and then, trying to match up my colors here, 41 to 50 years old. Clay County has the majority of dispatches when we compare it to Otter Tail and Wilken County. Wilken County has always been very quiet. We've, we've done extensive advertising, outreach, education in their area, but it's still, it's, it's one of our smaller populations that we.
That could be population related, right?
Absolutely.
Obviously, the more people you have, the more chance.
Well, I mean, Lakeland is, or Wilken is not part of Clay County, so they maybe call, they call maybe go to their hospital or something.
Yes, yes. And we know culture-wise, there's a large farming community. And we know we have phenomenal farmers and historically, they're not necessarily people who are going to reach out for help. Reasons why families are calling, this is for the children, 80% of, of the calls are relating to aggression. It's, it's based off of defiancy, they don't want to do their chores, they don't want to clear the table. And we end up finding out that something occurred during the school day, which agitated them, got home, and parents are asking more out of them, therefore escalated. And our children's age groups, as you can see here, our majority come from our adolescents, our teens, the 11 through 15 years of age. And our children as well are seen more in Clay County. But Otter Tail is a close behind that, so. I threw a lot of information at you, so.
And what curious as to why Otter, Otter Tail has about the same population that we have, why there's a difference between Otter Tail and Clay?
It's a, it's a large county to educate. And I, you know, I'm, I'm sure that we haven't been able to reach all, but it's, it's more of a challenge to get out to the, the general public.
I'd like to say that for the local advisory council for adult mental health, Pat always was there, and for children, you are always there.
Yep.
And these two advisory councils are very well-run and operated, and we get reports on all of the agencies every week, and there'll be, this afternoon, we have a meeting too. Thank you so much, ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tina? Yeah. Lana and Pat. Were there, um... Timon, could you do your reports while we're wrapping it up?
Oh, yeah. I can certainly do that. As was discussed earlier, the, we had the Clay-Wilken Health Board meeting in Barnesville, and that's been reported on. On Wednesday, we had the public outreach meeting for the diversion authority, and we went over, oh, the previous months, what had happened in terms of outreach. You know, the, as Commissioner Everett had talked about here last, last month, I believe we mentioned it last month during the meeting, but there's concerns regarding the cemeteries in the rural areas, and there's work going on right now by the Corps to establish those and to come up with a plan for how, how the cemeteries would be dealt with. And that's, that's a good thing, and, and I would think within the next 30 days, we'll be getting some information from them. And of course, then the diversion authority meeting itself took place on Thursday, and as Commissioner Everett also said, is that the work that the land management committee did, we did approve a language that really gets the ball rolling for this crop insurance, which is, I think it's something that's waited way too long to get the attention of the authority to actually make some contact on. I think hopefully there's, you know, some feeling on the part of those landowners that when they can't, when it comes to crop loss or late planting, that we've got that on our radar, and I just want to say, we as a diversion authority, and that we intend to try to come up with a plan that will make it right for them. So, and I know John's been serving on that land and management committee as a farmer and knowing the background. All the details are yet to be worked out. We have a Montana firm that's been set up to help design this process, and they've designed these plans throughout the world, so, so I think we're on the right track there. And it's, certainly it's gonna take some time for completion. And I think as Roger Olson had said in our, in our public outreach meeting, the actual, the ag committee actually had suggested that we slow down a little bit on some of this stuff because it was moving pretty fast and all the detail, you know, the significant details just need, need some time to be worked out. But our goal obviously is to improve that situation for, or at least the, make it clear to the landowners that, that we intend to offer some sort of protection for them. And that was all that I had.
Okay. Clay County's main lady, Kathy McCabe, adopted joint powers agreement for establishing a new community health board. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. I don't have to discuss adult mental health, do I?
No.
Okay, good. Saw the PowerPoint there.
Notice how she says that after she just met with us five at a meeting?
I wasn't insinuating anything.
Now, this is forested, which I'll be forested, is what we had last Tuesday at Barnesville meeting, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I, I think there was a change in at least more clarification under section four in regards to the, the five-member board.
Yep.
So the county commissioners are the same, but the at-large community member from one county. I think that was, and I think I sent you the clarification on that, I made those changes, that there will be one community member. And then the terms of the community member shall be rotated, so that was under the terms under C.
This is in the bylaws, that's a...
That's, this is under the joint powers agreement. The bylaws, there may be some changes we need to make, that's still in draft format. We haven't finalized all of the details, there, there are some things we may need to change in the bylaws to make sure that they reflect what we have changed in the joint powers agreement.
The changes that were requested last Tuesday haven't been taken care of.
In the joint powers agreement, that is correct.
And that's what we're acting on today.
And that's what, yes, that's what I would request approval of. The county, Clay County Attorney hasn't had an opportunity to review and approve, so it'd be contingent upon that approval as well.
That was my question, I wanted to make sure that...
Gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chair? I had visited with Kathy just a little bit, if, if you may, and I know you guys are very sensitive to keeping the public informed on this, but maybe Kathy should just, two minutes on an overview of what this is really all about?
Kathy?
Okay. This joint powers agreement that we've been working on for a few years, at least in talking about how we plan for the future and improving quality of services and meeting all of the expectations in the future for public health, we have embarked upon a proposal to include Clay, Wilken, Otter Tail, and Becker Counties. Previously, it's been a Clay-Wilken Community Health Board, so as you are familiar with that operations, we've had that for 30-plus years. I'm not sure exactly the date that we entered into the Clay-Wilken Community Health Board. So this arrangement, an agreement with the four counties, it will be very similar, it will now include two other counties. So the Clay-Wilken Community Health Board will now be a Clay-Wilken, Otter Tail, and Becker Community Health Board. And again, it's, it's to, for future funding, for services, to meet the needs of specialization that we're seeing in public health, so we'll have the ability to access resources and services across the four counties instead of the two counties. So we think this is going to have a greater impact for our ability to meet all of the needs in all of our communities. There really won't be any restrictions in crossing those county lines. So if I have expertise in my department with some of my staff, we can easily go into Otter Tail, or Becker, or Wilken County and provide expertise and services for those communities. And again, that will be an agreed-upon arrangement with the four counties, and we'll work at how that reimbursement will, will take place. The same with the Clay-Wilken. We work on MOUs and agreements, even with the joint powers agreement, we have agreements right now with those other counties. For instance, some financial work for my staff person is occurring in Otter Tail and Wilken County, and we have agreements about the payment of those services.
Thank you, Kathy. Timon?
Yeah, I, you know, I kind of liken this to other areas where we, where we have the ability to join forces, whether it's law enforcement in areas of, if there was a significant bomb threat, well, you might have, we might have people that serve on a group that come from both CAS and Clay County or something. So to me, it just shows our ability to, the expertise where the crisis is at the time.
Right.
Right? So I think, so I think that's, that's pretty important. We might have people from Otter Tail County who have expertise in, in a situation that might be occurring in Clay County, and we'd be glad to have them here for that purpose, right?
That's correct.
So that's kind of what this is, what this is all about. And, and this, this looks highly upon from the state level too, doesn't it? Isn't this what they're also encouraging to some degree?
Yes, very much so. The state and, and even at the national level, John has been attending some shared services learning collaborative work nationally, and they are looking at, how can we, you know, make better use of our resources? So this is one of those areas that we're moving forward on and progressing quite well.
Frank?
Since we've got expertise in, you know, I mean, you have some, the other counties have some, do you foresee anybody losing any staff on this, that we don't have to staff every county with the same expertise, or?
No, and we talked about that in our planning committee as we met over the period of the last couple years, that nobody would lose their job over this restructure. As recidivism happens and, and we have staff that move, either they leave or they move to another county, that's when we'll really look at, can we share services then? For example, we have an emergency preparedness coordinator now who has resigned, and we will look at that in our four-county structure. How can that, how can we serve that area of need in our four-county structure? So it'll be more with staff resignations for grants. When we apply for grants, we have opportunities to have increased staff for, you know, when there's funding sources and new programs. So we will look at opportunities to share those staff members as much as possible. So no, nobody will be losing their employment through this process at this time. And the committee really, that was really a discussion at length about that, and I know Otter Tail was pretty significantly involved in, in their restructure, that nobody would lose positions, and that's the stance we took with this proposal as well.
Right, you know, I, I think the, the words that you said there though is, is this restructuring over time allows opportunities to re-look at how we, you know, it's kind of like our whole redesign thing throughout the state of Minnesota and how we're doing things. It allows opportunities to evaluate and have more, more options available to us as opposed to each individual county having to hire more and hire more and what have you. So I, I think this is really good.
And I, and I think certainly down the road, you know, there's efficiencies to be gained by the expertise. So as four counties are working on one project, it may be that we have a lead in one of our counties and, and therefore can move forward as people leave.
Well, Mr. and I, I would, I would move that we approve the joint powers agreement between the counties of Becker, Clay, Otter Tail, and Wilken County to establish a joint community health boards.
subject to review and approval by our county attorney's office.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Carrie?
Okay, thank you.
Big step.
Yeah.
It's a roller coaster.
Now the work begins.
Oh, sure. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Chief, could we have your reports?
Yeah, let's see. We had the Gregor Ferguson Economic Development Corporation executive meeting last week. And that was just general business and some personnel issues we were dealing with. We had a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon campaign meeting last week. And things are going well with that organization. We, you know, with our Veteran's Service Office, we're looking at, Tom's assistant was eligible now to become nationally accredited. And of course, there's some costs involved with that. But we talked about that at the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And I think some of our Veterans Service Clubs and Beyond the Yellow Ribbon itself are going to step up and at least I'll pay for a part of that. We're scared sometimes. So at least that's what we talked about. And I think it looks pretty promising. Let's see. And area agency and aging meeting yesterday. And that was general business also. We did have a presentation on medication management, which is a very significant project to be dealing with. Some of the studies show, at least in our area, that the average person over the age of sixty-five is taking between three and thirty medications a day. And the average is fourteen a day. And so there's some, some big issues there in helping elderly deal with just managing all those interactions and when they take them and how they take them. It's almost a full-time job for people that are on that much medication. So that was interesting. And then we had a PICC committee meeting this morning. And we're still looking at some issues with the healthcare savings plan with elected officials. We still haven't got that resolved because some new issues have come up. But we're trying to get that taken care of. And we'll probably be back with the board sometime in the near future to discuss it.
On Tuesday, November twelfth, I have the Clay-Wilken Joint Boards of Health meeting. And that's already been covered. Personnel issues committee this morning, and that has also been covered. And Brian could possibly even add to that if he would like. So, Brian, update.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Several of the meetings that I attended have already been talked about, the public health meeting in Barnesville. And I think it's, you guys are all well aware of that. But that has been about a two-year project. And it's been several committee meetings on it. And I think it's a, really a giant step forward. I'd like to compliment Kathy for her hard work on it. She's really coordinated that very well with us, I know. I did spend about an hour and a half with Wankin Associates. Steve and Marlo came in and wanted to get a sense of where the county was on this. So we talked about a lot of different things. And I think we had a good discussion as to what our discussion has been as far as building the transfer station and looking at transferring and what's our future with the burner and things like that. So we had a real good discussion on that. So we can probably talk more about that later. We had a chamber of commerce, I'm on the public affairs meeting. We had a presentation from Charlie Johnson. And what he was mostly talking about is the Fargo Event Center that they're talking about over there and how that relates to frankly, Clay County and Morehead. I mean, it's a, it's a big event for the metropolitan area. It's not just for one side of the river or the other. But it's really, if you haven't heard the presentation on that yet, that's, it's moving along quite rapidly. And, you know, the two main locations they're talking about are the Fargo Dome or the downtown. Downtown would certainly make it really easy accessible. They're talking even, dreaming about maybe a footbridge across the river. And right would be next to the convention center. That would be real positive for downtown Morehead. And so there's some real positive things there, I think, in regards to that convention and event center. So the land management meeting, that has been covered quite well. And I think the other thing, and I didn't bring it up at it because we were kind of running out of time in the land management. But I think some of the feedback that we have received when we've talked to people is that we possibly need to talk about not just the hardship buyouts, early buyouts. We have to start looking at the financial hardships, too, and talking a little bit about that. I mean, I know we're ways out. But I think we've addressed it a few times. It just hadn't, hasn't been to the committee at all. So maybe we can talk about that next time as far as progressing down that road as well. Then we had the diversion meeting. That was, that was covered. I spent a little time with Darren and Mike. They, Mike Ringel, our county attorney on labor negotiations, they're working with two different bargaining units right now and moving forward quite smoothly. But we spent a little time on a philosophical approach there and where some things are going, which is really good. Tended the township officers meeting yesterday. That ran the full morning. I think we were done at about twelve, ten, twelve fifteen. So, yeah, I too thought that what a good opportunity to get together and exchange ideas with those very basic governments out there that are very important to us. And I thought we had a real good exchange of information. You know, they were wanting to listen to what the county's doing. And we want to listen to what their ideas are. So I thought it went really well. The PICC committee meeting was this morning that Commissioner Engessall referred to. We have a few issues that will be coming to the board in the near future. One being the elected officials, issues with the affordable healthcare and how that fits in. You guys have taken action on that. But there has been some, some feedback from the state in regards to that plan. So we'll be doing some more work on that. We've done some work on the roster grid, or it'll be the variable hour grid, part-time employees and things. So we'll be bringing that to the board in a future session. And then some changes in the transferring of leave from one employee to the other. And that'll probably just be brought to the board. It's a simple adjustment that we're talking about. So, and then the furlough. If you want to extend it, we were thinking of just doing that on consent, bringing the furlough forward of an extension of that. Seems like it's worked out really well. I don't think there's been any problems with that at all. So just for you to think about, if you'd like that brought on the agenda or the consent, we'll plan on bringing that. And then just one little note. We had a little discussion last time when we had the presentation on the public, on the abatement request from the motel in Holly, that we are scheduling a public hearing for that. And Jenny and I talked about this. I had some questions in my mind. And goodness, thank goodness, she called me and said, you know, she said, "I think that is really, the abatement process really hasn't changed. That's a county board decision. That's not an EDA decision. So it's just a procedural thing. But when we recess or go into the public hearing, that is a county board issue, the abatement is. That's not an EDA. So you won't be meeting as an EDA board for that." It's just, it's just a process thing, but just for education purposes. And I felt uncomfortable last week when we were discussing that and the timing of it. And I knew there was something wrong there.
So the county board holds the public hearing. But then the ED, does the EDA board, what is, what's their purpose then?
They don't get involved in the abatement process.
In the abatement at all?
No. That's for the TIF.
That's just for TIF.
Yeah, that's just for TIF. But I think, I think frankly, the action that the EDA has taken, for me, has spurred this coming to the board and things. So, but the process is clear in regards to that. So that's it, Mr. Chair.
Frank?
On the, concerning the township meeting yesterday, too, just want to comment, our people that did speak there, all the supervisors that spoke there, they did a great job. And I really was impressed with their ability to answer the questions the townships have. You know, so I think they did a good job there. They should be recommended. The next thing, do we need to do something about transportation? You're not going down to the meeting?
No, I can't, I can't go.
Do we need to do, replace him on transportation or something? Or is that some other thing?
Well, Mr. Chair, is there an alternate? I don't know that there's an alternate. And the problem with that is that the other commissioners that are going are going to be tied up in meeting probably at the same time.
I think we can serve as, any of us can serve as alternate for anybody else. You know, we can, if we can get out of our meeting, if there's something on another meeting that we want to be sure to vote on or something, we can, we can leave our meeting and go to that one. But, you know, it's just, it's hard to know when to do that so you don't miss the important things in your own meeting. But obviously, there's only, there's five committees. There's only five of us. So it's, there's no extra person to be alternate.
And the problem with that is typically, most of those policy meetings are all happening at the same time.
They're all at the same time, yeah.
So it's hard to go from one to the other.
Sheriff? Matt, anything? Kevin?
I got one comment here. And it kind of maybe goes for John and for Brian. But through our highway tracking committee, one of our big projects that's on our five-year plan is the regrading and reconstruction of County Road Ninety-Five. And I think for, for the first time, we actually had asked our highway engineer to send a letter out to all the landowners in the area explaining to them what was going to be happening and when. And boy, I'll tell you what, I learned that sending that letter out was a good thing. This happens to be in my district, and I've gotten some feedback. And of course, the main feedback on it is, why in the world are we taking two years to regrade that road? So, but I, and I, you know, and I said, this is all about funds and when funds are available. And I said, we're going to do everything we can to see if we can change that. But we still have to take into consideration all the other plans throughout the county that we're doing. But overall, they, you know, the ones that talked to me appreciated getting that letter. So maybe that's something that we can learn for other projects that are in the future as a notice to the landowners beforehand of what's, what's coming in the timetable. So they did appreciate that.
How did he decide who to send the letter to? Was everybody in the township, or?
No, no. What they did is they, all the landowners basically within a certain distance of it, that they knew would have a regular use of the road.
And Mr. Chair, that would be relatively simple because that's what planning and zoning does with their public meetings. They have to notify everyone within a certain, so, you know, go to the GIS system and they can locate those names pretty easily. One other food for thought that was brought up at the, to me individually at the township meetings yesterday is that they said that the coyote problem is pretty bad out in the county. And they're losing deer population. And, you know, I suppose you could even look at it from an economic standpoint of hunting and different things. But, but they said, you know, I know, this township officer said, "I know townships can do it individually. But when it comes to a roaming animal like a coyote," he said, "it doesn't do much good for one township to do a bounty on it." And so I said, "Well, let me throw it out there in our reports and see if you folks want to go any direction with that." Because there's a lot of things to consider if you start talking about that. I mean, then you, the publicity of it and the beta groups and...
We might get coyote tails from all over the state.
That's exactly right. So it requires some thought.
That's what a township's concern is, too. How do you know where they got the, where they got?
That's exactly right. So...
You'll go for things.
It is a significant issue, though. I mean, that, you know, wildlife certainly are being taken, but also...
Caves?
Yeah, cats and calves and, you know, a lot of concerns. I saw a thing on television, the news, I don't know if you saw that. There was a race, a footrace people were having. And all of a sudden, you know, right through, this path went, that they were running, went right through a crowd of people standing, watching. And a coyote came running down the same, same path during the race. You know, so I mean, they're not afraid of people anymore. They're just a...
That's a dumb coyote.
Yeah.
Then you got a gun.
Nobody had a gun at the race. So it's, it is a problem that we need to, and I don't know. I don't, I've never heard the county ever did a bounty.
No.
I've got a contact, I mean, yesterday I talked to the, I mean, someone came to me about that coyote problem, too. So I contacted, talked to the Soil and Water Conservation District. And there's a person that goes down with downer that should have some information. I haven't been able to get ahold of him yet. So I'm going to keep trying today and see if there's a bounty on coyotes and stuff like that. So as soon as I get that information, I'll share.
There may be some to talk to the state legislators about doing a state bounty because it's a problem statewide. So it's...
Sheriff?
Do you have local, that have DOD or like, with the broad guns, well, they have like, where you go off shooting as many as you can, and everybody puts in twenty bucks for the person who's a coyote? There's a lot of that going on in Clay County.
There must be a significant population of coyotes in our county then.
Everywhere.
No? Never seen one.
They're out there.
Anything further, gentlemen? We are adjourned.